Welcome, everybody, again for the second time, those of you who are here. This is especially to discuss the 2050 vision workshop to assist council members. Remind you that this is a public session and we are being recorded.
We'll call, we'll call reform.
Yes.
Any declarations? Seeing none.
Sorry, I know.
I'll just, I'll just wait till you sit down there. So we've got one item before us today. Would somebody like to move an amendment to our rules and procedures to allow for more of them to speaking opportunities? I see a mover, Manny Secor Rose, sorry, councillor Samuel and councillor St. Holy. Informal about our preparation meeting yesterday, so I'm sorry. So this is to allow pre-speaking opportunities, any discussion we focus. Do you want to discuss something?
No.
You're just waiting to grade?
Saying hi to me?
Okay, excellent, thanks. We don't have voting machines today, so we're doing stuff by show of hands. So show of hands, those in favor of waiving the rules? Can we show them again? One, two, three, four, that carries, okay, thank you. So now we move on to item 4.1. And I'm going to introduce Glenn Potte. Is that how you say it, Glenn?
Close enough, Potte.
Okay, thank you very much, Glenn is the facilitator and president GLPI, and I'm sure he's going to tell us what those alphabet soup letters mean when we get started. Regarding item 5.1 with 2050 vision, Glenn, go ahead, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much, Chair McCurry, and good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the meeting, and thank you so very much for taking time out of your busy schedules to be a part of this workshop. It's much appreciated, and thank you as well for inviting me to assist and to serve as the facilitator for today. Let me address the elephant in the room. We will get you out of here on time to get to the hockey game tonight, which starts at eight, as you know, Canada versus the US. So we'll be looking to wrap up by seven o'clock, if not a little bit earlier, but I don't want to prejudge that. We want to make sure that we give you adequate time to speak to all of the issues. Now, I've had the opportunity of meeting some of you previously, but for those of you whom I've not yet met or haven't had a chance to work with before. My name is Glenn Potte, I'm the head of a firm called GLPI. I do a lot of this work in the realm of strategic planning and vision statements and mission statements and so forth. And as some of you may know, just so you understand a bit of my background and context, I've worked on the strategic plans for a bunch of your adjacent neighbors. From Norfolk County to Alderman County, to the county of Brandt, to Halton Region, to Milton, to a whole, and that's just a, 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 a small number of the municipalities that I've worked with. But more than that, I've worked a, a lot with the private and the not-for-profit sectors, and I'll look to bring all of that to bear in our work together today. Okay, so what are we up to? That's the big question. And really simply put, we're looking to do two big things today. One is to identify some of the priorities that you believe need to be on the table, and we're looking out to 2050, right? This is part of the city of Bradford's 2050 initiative. So we got to have that bigger picture sort of view in mind. So we'll take you through some exercises to get at some of those priorities. But we're also looking to develop, and you know, hence the name of the workshop, this idea of, of, of visioning workshop, a vision exercise. We're looking to develop a vision for the city that is clear, cogent, compelling, that everybody can rally around. And again, this is a vision to take us out for a considerable amount of time. Now, the good news is, we may not, in fact, we're not likely to finalize anything today. We're looking to, this afternoon, generate some really good ideas, create some strong possibilities for the future. But there will be, I think, some wordsmithing and other work required post-meeting. I won't be involved in that, my role was to help design this session and to facilitate it. But we've got some very capable people who are in charge of your strategic initiatives project, who will continue that and carry the ball forward. And they'll be coming back to you at a later council meeting, and we'll talk more about that in next steps towards the end of the meeting. So though we're not going to look to finalize anything today, we are going to look to make significant progress. So I hope you'll join me in trying to make that happen. In terms of our agenda, there's a copy that was put out in front of all of you, but I'll walk you through it quickly. We're obviously in the opening remarks component right now. In a moment, we're going to talk a little bit about some of the things that are working well. And the reason we're doing that is because good strategic planning isn't just about addressing problems and issues and opportunities, though that's part of it. It's also about building on strength. So we'll talk a bit about some of those things that are working well from your perspective that we want to capitalize on. And then we also want to get a sense of what you see as the things that the community has on their minds. So I'll talk to you about some of the things that you know are going on in and outside of Bradford that we need to be thinking about. And it could be bigger picture stuff like tariffs, or it could be smaller picture stuff like what's happening in particular neighborhoods and that the public care about. So we'll get into some of that as some context at it. Then I'm going to take you through a priority setting exercise using something called the pair and share technique. And I'll give you more details about that later, but we will be going into recess and working in smaller groups to get us through that. And then we'll be reconvening in plenary to share the highlights of that, so that everybody can hear. And when I say everybody, I mean not just you, but anybody who's observing this meeting remotely will have the opportunity to hear about the highlights of the exercise and what came out of it. And then after we've done that, we'll have a working dinner and so forth, we'll move into the vision statement part of the meeting. And there are a few draft vision statements that have been created by staff. We'll run those by you to get your reactions, but we'll also give you the opportunity to generate vision statements as well. So we'll do all of that, and then we'll talk about next steps, and then we'll look to get you out of here. So it's an ambitious agenda, but one that is achievable if we stay focused and keep moving, and I'm sure all of you will join me in making that happen. Now, quick word, we are very pleased to say we have Laura Almeida, who's sitting here at the end of the table on the left. She is, as you know, a city staff person. She has kindly agreed to be our live time reporter. So she will be taking notes live and on screen for us in most of the session components. She will be not looking to capture things verbatim, so don't expect her to be a stenographer, she's just looking to capture the essence of the comment. If you feel that it's been missed, please let me know, let Laura know, she is happy to make any changes or additions. And of course, we do have some other good folks, staff in the back that we can draw upon as resources as needed. And a couple of things, if you haven't been to this facility before, I think all of you have, the washrooms are just out of this store, Quick Right, and then another Quick Right, so they're not too far away. And if you're trying to log on, I'm told by Steve that you all know how to use COV guests, C-O-V guests, so you can use that as a network if you need to and log on in that way. So I think that was it in terms of kind of setting it up. Any questions about the agenda before we launch right into things? And are you, Chair McCurry, can I, with your permission, beg the indulgence of the group to do a quick exercise? If people are in the mood to do something a little different to start the meeting?
With your man, indeed, unless it's like way out there.
It's not way out there, okay. In fact, there is a deeper meaning to this. If you would, Laura, advance to the next slide. I'd like to give this to a number of you, maybe four or five of you, and just have you do this, using this paper bar and your prop. Add something out, whatever you would like to act out without saying anything, and the rest of us will guess. So if I did this, what am I doing? Exactly. Would you want to kick us off if you'd be surprised? You don't have. Anything you'd like. I'm going to warm up for this one.
All right.
Baseball.
Exactly. Give it to whoever you'd like, any of your colleagues. Thank you.
It'll be.
Thank you, councillor, for kicking us out.
Shallowest.
And we've all done a little bit of that.
Well, no.
Here, I can pass it over. Let me give it to the mayor if you'd like.
Who is the mayor?
Anybody you want to, we'll just do one or two more, anybody else want to go?
Okay.
Oh, you all got to do, okay, we're all councillors.
Get ready to laugh, folks. Ready?
Ready.
That's great, thank you.
But we guessed it.
Yeah, we'll get the other two.
Hey, perfect, given where we are, yeah.
Any other sports you can ask them? They pick a ball.
Okay, so why didn't we do that? It's later in the day, it gets you moving a bit, wakes you up, we had a few chuckles and laughs, which is great, but here's the deeper reason behind this exercise. Why didn't a single one of you, and nobody did this, why didn't one of you, like if, for example, if you were, you know, wanted to do a hockey stick? You know, turn this into a hockey stick, or do this and make it a bird going through the air? All of you worked with this junky piece of paper that I used painter's tape on, and you assumed that you had to keep it in this shape. Nobody did anything, nobody made it a snake going through the grass, you just worked with it the way I gave it to you. Let's today, as we want to think about out to the year 2050, not next year, not two years from now, out to the year 2050. Let's be a little more creative, let's be willing to break some of those assumptions and challenge ourselves to think innovatively and creatively. So that's my message for the group in this, aside from, again, having some fun, and thank you, Chair, for indulging me, thank you councillors for doing that, much appreciated. Okay, so let's start off, if we could, Laura, switch over to the document, I've created a recording template, so again, you can see some of this go live on screen. Just a Word document that has some information. And by the way, if you are unaware, everybody, we do have councillor Carpenter who is joining us virtually. So I'll ask those in the back if, if the councillor at some point wants to get in, if he raises his hand to let me know, because I may not see it from where I'm working here. Okay, so let's start with the first question. In terms of what's happening in the city of Bradford itself, what is going well? What are some of those strengths, some of those successes that you would say, I'm going to be blunt with you, you would say, Glenn, let's not screw around with this, it's working well, we want to build on this, there's not a problem. It is a success, it's fabulous, just yell them out. Again, we've, we're relaxed the rules here, we don't need to go through the chair, we can just, you know, kind of get into the conversation, just one at a time, though, so Laura can keep up with you. So what's, yeah, kick us off a chair.
Well, Glenn, our revenue stream is constantly increasing, right? So that allows us to do the things that the people that are in this community need and want done.
Excellent, thanks for kicking us off, and nice and succinct as well, others jump in, and yes, Mayor?
Timely and effective response.
Thank you.
So the housing crisis, we have responded, think of really timely and effective way. Homelessness on the streets, again, I think we responded better than most communities, we are in fact.
And so you like?
Because it's, it's important for us, I think, to be innovative and to address the problems around them.
Right, so there's a responsiveness, a timeliness, fabulous, others, jump in, anybody? Stuff that's going well, it's got to be more that you feel is going well, yes, please.
The airport, it's poised to expand and take off. But it's, we're looking at a municipal service corporation which will, will top the airport, develop new facilities and expand early operation.
Something like DME, like Grant Municipal Enterprises, that kind of.
Yeah, with the airport and we want a real hub for general aviation.
Thanks councillor Martin. Other, we've got councillor Carpenter on the line. Oh, great, go ahead councillor.
Our neighbor association system works very well, it could be improved, but it works very well.
So the neighborhood associations, thank you. And, yes?
I was going to say our, our parks and the community programming and investments that help the community.
Councillor, I mean, you're all councillors, councillor Segol.
I was going to say that we have a really keen eye right now for lifestyle and really enhancing the lifestyle of the resident of Bradford.
Can you unpack that for us a bit? What do you mean?
Be investing in our trail systems, investing in sports entertainment center, investing in our perks and recreation, in fact, investing in events that explore cultural initiatives, arts and culture. So I think we're really starting to grow on
Gotcha.
Just the lifestyle of the individual.
So amenities, events, activities that allow people to fully live their lives and, correct, got your?
Councillor. Growth and development has to slow down even at certain times.
So it hasn't slowed down?
There's still a lot in the queue, there's still a lot that's happening, and a lot that's going to be happening, so I think that's a possibility, we have to see it slow down in our community based on those.
Thank you, councillor Samuel.
I would say the upcoming changes to our transit system, you know, they hasn't happened yet, but we've set finances aside to do that, and so we're looking forward to the updates and transit system.
Wonderful, anything essential, yes, that we've missed, councillor.
I think probably the biggest thing that we can recognize the sweater is that we're blessed to have enough snow. Pete Mr. Jocklin and his public works crews busy, so they're on my wall all winter.
Right. Yeah, no shortage of that, that's for sure. Anybody else, anything that we haven't hit on that's a kind of big success, something that's working really well, something you're feeling good about? Okay, so let's go to the second question, if we could, Laura, if you could just stand down. Thank you again, Laura, for do capturing that, that's much appreciated. Normally, I'm up here keying it in, but it slows it down a little bit, so Laura's doing wonderful job. So there's a few questions in here, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at the package that was sent out that had the materials that summarized what was heard in some of the focus groups, and as you know, there's an ongoing survey that's still in the field right now. But there was a lot of good information that came from the community. But I'm interested in knowing what is happening in the city of Bradford or outside of it that's going to have an impact on the city that you think we need to be thinking about? And what did you see in the engagement results, or what are you hearing out there? Like you're in your communities, you're on the hustings, you're talking to people all the time, and they're probably telling you about stuff they like and don't like, and what frustrates them and what makes them happy. But what are some of those key things that we need to put on the table right now? Because it needs to inform our discussion of priorities, and it needs to inform our later discussion of vision. So we'll take answers to any of those. What's going on that needs to inform our discussion either in or outside the city? And what are you hearing, what did you see, councillors probably kick.
What I saw in the results and what I hear echoed in the community is our prioritization of our more vulnerable community. So mental health, addiction, homelessness, and I'm not sure that that needs to fall under percent on our plates as a municipality, but there could be a role for us to play in advocacy work to work with different tiers of government.
So people.
To address that in a way that's, yeah.
Yeah, they have an expectation that you're going to do something, whether it's using your influence or doing something to grab.
Just to be clear, I think we are doing that, I just don't know that it's being reflected out there, the work that we are doing.
Gotcha. Others jump in, what's going on in the world that needs to inform our discussion, Mayor?
Well, very recently, this whole trade situation.
Yes.
Which I think many people are awakening the fact that we're vulnerable because of our senior focus on manufacturing. I think it's going to be a catalyst for a rethink of our economic development strategy.
Right, so that uncertainty that's out there right now around the economic situation of terrorists, the exports, big, big question mark. Great, keep in common, what else did you see in the results? What are you hearing in the community? What needs to inform our discussion? There's got to be some other stuff on your minds.
Shall I keep going? Affordability.
Of what? Everything?
How we can drive our own local economy, how we assist those less fortunate, we'll say, how do we, you know, just affordability in general, housing affordability.
Price of eggs, everything.
Exactly, it's across the board.
I want to get a few more in, I won't specifically call you out, but councillor Samuel, and then I'll go over to Chair McCurry.
So this is something that we hear a lot in the community, and I think it's about, so that's since feeling heard. And so I know that's not necessarily so tangible as some of the other examples, but I think even though we're working on our community involvement framework, we need to continue to have the conversations to improve. People feeling heard and involved in what the community's doing.
So the outreach, the engagement, all of that.
Absolutely.
Gotcha, thank you. Sorry, councillor McCurry and then councillor.
One of the things that seems to be prevalent in our community is that residents of Bradford seem to think that the eleven of us can solve everything. And that everything is our responsibility and our fault, including prime mental health, housing, the weather. And we become increasingly, this community reliant upon municipal initiatives to resolve a lot of the things that were shed by the two senior levels of government. We don't do a very good job about telling people what's what. And we then, as a result, are being driven to do things that 25 years ago weren't on our place.
So there are both some very high and perhaps unrealistic expectations, given that, as you say, the municipality is not in a position to solve everything.
And of course, the senior levels of government cover their eyes, put their hands over their ears, and they're glad that we take the heat, right?
Right, so I saw three, and in order, I had councillor Caputo, I had the mayor, and then councillors Segol.
Actually, one is, I think, during what the mayor was talking about, when they're certainly with Detroit, I think you see a lot more unity amongst all of us as Canadians. Looking at taking the stance and or trying to be a part of initiating change, pretty much any good problem. And then, well, come to the first point. We haven't lost focus as a city in the fact that we are dire needs the hospital. And but that responsibility lies within the province. And I think there's a lot of misconception out there when we decide we want to move on a specific project or do something that everyone believes that the hospital supersedes all that. It does, but it needs to be put on the table to where it belongs, and that being the province. And even with a homelessness issue, that needs to be placed in the table of the federal government.
Right.
Not, we just probably do what we can, but at the end of the day, they're the ones responsible to look after all Canadians, not just from certain ramifications that they feel was in their premium, their blue view.
Right, yeah, I mean, something like a hospital, as you're saying, it might be within your sphere of influence to lobby and advocate for it, but it's not in your sphere of control, that is a provincial thing. Mayor, you were next, and then something similar.
Yeah. Moving people. And that covers is things like GO, which is public transportation connections outside the city. It's public transportation inside the city, it's public transportation just outside the city's region. It's smooth, efficient movement of traffic, we're into the travel. And I found it even interesting in the survey results, despite the lack of bike lanes, there does seem to be a real concern that our city isn't set up to encourage going upon to transportation.
Then I saw that in there, there was a lot in there about the different aspects of mobility, regardless of mode. Thank you for sharing that, councillor Segol.
Mister Caputo stole my answer. Missed the hospital, maybe that?
Mike, that's not here. Councillor Pope, I'll go over here, and then I'll come over there, Chair McCurry, so councillor Tilburg?
Yeah, one of the things that, that I hear in travels, and I, and it's in places where I don't expect it to hear, to hear it, is how much our sports and entertainment bring us together. So while we've heard that, you know, a, a tariff assault on us has kind of brought us together with the community. Prior to that and through that, I find that our community is being brought together through sports, particularly like when I'm going through a drive-through window of a Burger King or Wendy's, and they see my, my hat on. They're like, oh, what the, how the team do tonight and stuff, like it's, it's a morale builder. And this city hasn't had such a morale builder in, in a long, long time. So I, I think that's a really good thing in our community, and that's what I'm hearing from, from our residents.
Thank you, Chair McCurry.
It's a resurgence in Bradford pride. You may not be familiar, but Bradford suffered horribly through an economic downturn in the eighties. A lot of what fueled the city's revenue and supported its families went south early. And it's been a long climb back under that duldrum pole. And now we have a Costco, which is a huge source of community pride. We have a junior A hockey team, which is a huge source of community pride, and by the way, they're in first place, another leading scorer in the league. Not to go too far in point on it. And I hear from cloud drivers stop asking when we're going to break ground for the new arena. It's, it's a hot topic here, and, and, you know, despite the fact that there are some very negative people in our community and some that are quite hateful. I think the majority of people look upon this as turning the corner on Bradford's image again, and making sure that we have something in this community that's going to last us, you know, into the next generation in terms of being a sports team that we can hang our hats.
Thank you. Anybody else, anything to add in terms of what you saw in the engagement results, anything you're hearing from the community? Anything, again, critical that's going on in the city or outside of the city that needs to inform our discussion of priorities and vision?
There is one other thing. You know, a lot of times we'll hear from, from, from our constituents, and it's not just a question of them having an issue with maybe their smoke clearing, but there's also the tagline that I pay an awful lot of taxes, but I expect to have my street clean in good order. So it's not just, it's not just pointing out service deficiencies or service requests, it's also, there's also an underlying current of, of tying that to the cost of living here specifically with respect to when people pay a property tax.
Councillor Samuel, were you waving? No, okay, I will, it's like a, an auction, it tugged on your ear, I get to in. Anything from councillor Carpenter? No, we're good?
Well, there's one, yes. What I'm hearing out there from a lot of people is that, is that they have a distrust in politicians at all levels. And it shows in the number of people showing up to vote, and we need to work on that.
Thank you. Anyone else, anything to add before we move into our next exercise? Which I'm going to set up for you, and then we'll be going into a recess to do it, because we're going to be in smaller groups. But anything else you want to share in plenary that's going on that you think's important, that needs to inform our discussion?
One thing that needs to happen is we need to be moving forward with the ground fields. They seem to have stalled out, they've got the more upgrades, say, but nothing's happening, you're just sitting there.
Looking to redevelop?
Yeah, it needs to be moving forward as, as something on that side.
Anyone else, anything? Okay, other stuff may pop up during the meeting. Laura, thank you again, if you wouldn't mind just flipping to the slides, and I will give people a quick overview of how this works. And I'll preface it, or I'll just wait till it comes up on the screen. So, okay, so here's a little bit of background. So for this exercise, this is where we want to identify a limited number of priorities. And I've done this a million ways, as you can imagine, as a facilitator, I've done the stuff where we put post that's on the wall, and you put little dots beside them and so forth. We're not going to do that today. We're going to use the technique that I use a lot with people who want to have good, honest, real conversations with each other. Use this a lot with very senior executives in the private sector. I have done this with a number of your municipal colleagues in other places, and it has always yielded a good outcome. This is how it works, it's called the pair and share, because we keep pairing up and sharing what we've developed. But I'm going to go through this slowly, just to make sure we're all crystal clear, and please feel free to ask a question if you have any. So step one, on your own, so you don't have to talk to anybody, but once you go into recess, you're going to come up with what you think are six sort of big priorities up to the year 2050. And when we talk about it being a priority, it's got to find the sweet spot. And what I mean by that is it's got to be realistic, tangible, it's got to be accomplishable. And what I mean by that is it's gotta be realistic, tangible, it's gotta be accomplishable, and it can't be too vague. Right, if you were to say to me, my priority is to improve the economy of the city of Bradford, I'm gonna tell you that's a bit too vague. Cause I know Aaron and others are looking for better, sort of more precision in the strategic priorities that you want to pursue. You might say, uh, you know, a strategic priority under the economic development heading is to, I'm making this up. Get into, bring more advanced manufacturing to the city. Um, you know, so there's a little more precision than simply saying something vague like make the economy better. So try to find the sweet spot. Now, you'll notice in front of you, there are six cards and they are different colors. And by the way, if anybody um, has color blindness, I'm happy, Laura's happy to sit down with you and run through which card is which. But what we want you to do, um, is each of you on your own, and it corresponds with a sheet that's also in front of you. Is to come up with one priority for each of these strategic area buckets. So these were identified, as you know, already in your process as part of your Bradford twenty fifty process. There's one about, um, you know, business and industry, and there's one about climate and sustainability. So write the ones that pertain to those buckets on the right colored card, right? So I'm, I'm, the pink card is for diverse and welcoming community, so your priority in that area goes on the pink card. So you'll be developing six total priorities, one for each of the buckets, one on each of the cards. And again, be reasonably precise, not too precise, like we're not looking for you to say we want to. Bring one new McDonald's to Bradford, like we're not looking for that level of precision. But enough that, you know, Aaron and others can, and Laura can do something with it. Once you've done that, again, that's on your own, you will pair up with one of your couns- uh fellow councillors. And we've got eight of you, including our councillor Carpenter who's joining us virtually, and Emma will. Emma, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Emma will like bring the laptop over and so that you can have that conversation with councillor Carpenter. And what you will do when you pair up, and this, this won't be three groups of three and one of two anymore. It's now gonna be four groups of two, right, cause there's only eight of you, which works out fine in terms of the math. You're gonna share your top sixes, so imagine I did this, um, and uh, you know, the mayor did it. We pair up, I say, this is what I had mayor, and the mayor tells me what he had. If ours overlap, we'll be laughing, right? If ours are almost all the same, we'll come up with our seven in no time. But if I have six that are completely different than his six, we're gonna have to talk it through. Uh, you know, we're gonna have to say, why is yours better than mine? Why is my priority better than yours? And so you've gotta get from six and six to seven through good, robust discussion. And my little thing here is, you can create a new card, but do not water things down. If you're like most people, and I assume you are, you'll try to find a way to accommodate everything, no, be a little bit tough. Like, see, you know, I, I would, I mean, I won't say it to the mayor, cause I'm not, but I would say, no, mister mayor, I think mine is better than yours, and we talk it out. And so challenge each other.
Don't say mine's better, because I am.
It's right, and then I would be fired, and it would be over, but it, but that's the idea, is to challenge each other and come up with then seven. And then, once you've done that, um, we will have you pair up. Cause now you'll be two and two getting together, and you'll share your top seven, which you have to come up with a top eight. Now, one quick word, when you're doing this part, it's one per card, right, by the bucket. But when you come up with your top seven, it doesn't have to be one from each of the six areas. Right, you could say, we're going to do two yellows and, and no greens when you come up with your top seven, we'll leave that up to you. But do not throw out any of your cards. Because Laura is gonna collect all of them at the end, so we don't lose the result of that first step. So that's what we're gonna do, I'll be here, Laura's here to help anybody out. Before we do that, though, I'm gonna have to hand things, first of all, any questions before I hand things back to Chair McCurry to bring us into recess so that you can go into the breakdowns? We're all clear? Excellent, Chair McCurry, over to you, sir.
Recession. I pointed that we, in separate groups, we lose core. Until we reach these. Okay, that's worth. For some reason.
Is that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So. You're good?
Oh, now it's gonna watch the needs.
Alright. So for those of you, again, who are joining us remotely, we're just coming out of recess now, some of the councillors are just finishing up a small dinner. Uh, but we're going into the part now where we're going to share the outcomes of the pair and share exercise. And so for those of you who may not have been with us earlier, we did a quick exercise where we were going to end up with no more, no more than sixteen potential items. Cause each group, by the time they finish, would have had eight, and so in total, that would have been sixteen. Now Laura has kindly, over the break, inputted eight of them, but those are all from one of the teams, if you will, like one of the combined groups. The other group has their eight in front of them, and what I like to do is kind of go back and forth. So what I'll do is, and these aren't in any particular order, like don't be alarmed and think number one is more important than number two or number eight. These are just listed one to eight, so they're picking these numbers up and reference them, so I might give you that assurance. But what we'll do is, I'll read out the first one, for example, all new builds need to be net zero ready. And I'll ask this other group, and we're, we're ve- very pleased to have um councillor Samuel be the spokesperson for that group. Was there anything in your top eight that is very close or identical to the first one?
I would, yeah, I would say I agree, it will be pretty much exactly the same thing.
Read it, yeah, feel free to read it out, yeah, cause we can always have Laura just add it in as a sort of combined one.
Physical direct action.
Okay, so physical direct action, solutions, subdivisions built eco-friendly and carbon neutral, so it's, it's really encompassed in what you have there.
Okay, and if we'll make sure we give that to Laura afterwards, thank you. So now this time councillor Samuel, you kick us off, give us one of yours and we'll see if it's in the remaining seven. Pick anyone you want.
Well. With that, I'm gonna go with the blue ones, and I have two here, so you put a priority, I'm having two, so I'll just read it out. So increase our housing stock across the continuum, moving away from shelters and. Providing transitional options with a focus on mental health and addiction facilities, fully integrated with wraparound services.
Okay, so I'm not seeing that up in all, like I don't see anything about housing stock and so forth. So Laura, you wouldn't mind keying that in for us? Great, and while we're doing that, while Laura's doing that, I'm gonna jump to number two, which again came from the other group. Cheap local energy, did you councillor Samuel and your group have anything relating to, we're very closely aligned with that? You may not have, and that's fine, no, okay. So Laura, we'll give you a second to catch up, while you're doing that, let's go to the third one. Did you have anything around the museum district and festivals?
Um, um, so we have, we have something about festivals, but we have more than just what's included there, so I'll just add to that.
Yeah, read, read it out and then we'll just add it to that point.
Yeah, so we have the completion of the SEC, uh, refocus on being a tournament capital. And um, festival, festivals and music festivals.
Okay, great, if you could give that to Laura and she can add an idea, thank you. And so let's look at the next one. And this one, I'm actually gonna push a little bit here, and please, if you'll allow me through, through the chair to do so. This one's a little bit on the broad side, diversify and strengthen our local economy. Are you able to give Aaron and others a little more direction? What were you thinking about when you want to diversify and strengthen the local economy? Like, what are you imagining you might? What kinds of business or industry or commerce do you see bringing to Bradford? Anybody, just uh, and from any of the groups?
Well, ours would help with that.
Will it? Great, go ahead.
So encouraging more high-tech industry and higher-paying jobs.
Okay, so high-tech industry, higher-paying jobs, does that align with what the other group had thought of?
It was focusing on. Diversifying. From. Probably a very strictly manufacturing base. So get, basically, the theory game. We've never really marketed ourselves to like commerce, the regional head office, whatever. Probably because we didn't feel confident we had the quality of life and we were attractive. For that sector, and we think we now it. And soon, well, well.
So, so if I could ask Laura maybe to put in that point about like going beyond manufacturing, bringing in, that, that's, that gives us a flavor, that's great, thank you. Okay, I'm, so I'm gonna go back over here, councillor, give us another one that you had and we'll see if it's on the board.
So, had two for the pink as well, so. Increase community engagement, the focus on all cultures and tracking, um. Sorry, increase community engagement, the focus on including all cultures, attract to see improvements in the building of belonging, and then.
Let's add that, cause I don't see that up there.
And then I have one more.
Yes.
Um, and then also having a council that reflects the people, the, the melting pot of Bradford.
Okay. Great, we'll get both of those up, yeah, if you wanna give them to Laura, and we'll come back over here. County annexation, did it, did this group have, no, did not? What about a sports entertainment complex in there?
I read it in my earlier one.
That's right, that's right, thank you. And what about hospital, healthcare, doctors working on that as a priority area? No? Okay, and what about a road, and this specifically says road system, so I'm taking it that this group meant roads, not public transit. A road system that moves people better. Did you have anything?
So we didn't have road system, but we have LRT and GO.
Okay, let's put that as a different point.
Yeah.
Okay, so LRT and GO. So let's check in, did you have anything else that we haven't covered?
Uh, no, I don't have any cards left.
Okay, and does Laura now have them? Are they all entered?
Yes.
Great, and are there any cards that you have? That had any other ideas that didn't make it into the top eights, cause Laura wants to collect those, are there any outstanding?
We gave them all.
They're all got the card, yeah, there's, there's a stop.
Oh, oh yeah, no, but I mean, Laura's got them, is what I meant, you, you still don't have them, okay, that's great. So now, if I could, and this is not a, I, I, again, I don't want the clerks to like stare at me with daggers. This is not a vote, there's no motion on the table, we're just trying to get a sense of, of all of these. Which ones are perhaps, now that you've heard the totality, and there aren't that many, what were there, eleven or twelve?
Eleven.
Eleven. Of the totality of them, are there a few that are resonating more strongly than others from your perspective? And what I'll ask you to do, honor system, and Emma, if you could maybe speak for councillor Carpenter. Um, honor system, just raise your hand for those items you would put in your top five. So it'll be, so what I'll do is I'll say, number one, all new builds, and if that's in your top five, we'll just, again, we're not voting on them, we're just trying to get a sense of. How many of the eight of you, you know, would put that in your top five for today, that's all we're trying to do. So I'll give you a minute to look at them, and Laura will scan a little up and down, so that you can see them all, oh, we're doing it in our calendar, aren't we?
I don't, I don't write it down.
You don't have to write it down, no, as long as you can keep the five in your hands. You need a card to write it down, like we won't collect it, but feel free to write them down if you want. Just reference a number, that's all you. And again, I'll give you a minute to look at that, like councillor Carpenter, have a look. So again, which would you put in your top five? And when we finish this, we.
I honestly think sports, entertainment, complex, and museum district festivals. Are both orange and the same.
Here, that's what we were referring to in ours. So could we combine three of them, like put them together?
Yeah.
Aaron, would you mind doing that?
Cause they don't even handle those very things.
Okay, let's put those together and that'll make your life even easier. So we'll get it down to ten, so we'll take number six, put it in with three. We're just adding in the rest of it. Thanks, Laura. Okay, I'll give you a moment as that's happening, but we're gonna take six, we're gonna put it in with three, so that we have that one cluster, so we'll have ten total things. Once, and five, yeah, well, we can leave six, so, you know, don't take, Laura, don't take number six out as a row, and then it will.
Don't confuse us.
Yeah, yeah, okay, are we, did, anybody need more time?
I need.
Sorry, go ahead, mayor.
Well, the old three didn't put. Museum district. Mm-hmm, but just necessarily the same ones. That's conceived.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I didn't wanna replace what was in the old, yeah, sorry, Laura will add that back in, thank you.
I'm thinking that Laura does the.
That's okay, that's okay.
Yeah, we get.
Tourism and pretty.
Yeah.
Making Bradford a destination for a variety of reasons.
Exactly, yeah.
I think that's what's at the core of this.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay, so are we all set with our top five? No, okay, give me a minute or two. And Emma's councillor Carpenter, ready? Yes, thank you. Great, so I'll give you another, a little bit of time. And again, it's the honor system, I'm gonna trust you not to raise your hands more than five times.
But it's cheap local energy.
Anybody from that group wanna explain that you were thinking?
Where were you going with that?
What did cheap local energy mean for those who talked about it?
Cheap local energy means um, city of Bradford perhaps developing its own energy sources. We, we mined the dump now for.
And, and.
Methane. City of Bradford. Uh, with the permission of other governments could be comparable to hyper-electric. Power, creating our own nuclear power, something we should be looking at for, you know, two decades, I mean.
Okay, so the key idea there is local energy sources regarding, so, okay.
Or local nuclear.
That's a little different than the dog. Slightly different scale, yeah, there's a big, there's a scale there, for sure. Okay, are we ready? Okay, so I won't read them all, I'll just mention the number, and Emma, raise your hand on behalf of councillor Carpenter. So those who put number one in their top five. No one. Who put number two in their top five? One, two, three, four, okay? Four. Who put number thirty in their top five? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, so everybody, okay? Who put number four in their top five? One, two, three, four, four, four. Who put number five in their top five? One, two, three, four. Uh, six, we're skipping, who put number seven in their top five? One, two, three, four, five, six. Hold on, what's seven? Seven, including, okay, seven, and then who put number eight in their top five? One, two, three, number one. Oh, sorry, did you say you need a second?
No, I thought we had the LRT here.
We did have, oh.
It's coming.
It's now on.
Oh, that's a, oh, that's a green.
Different one, yeah, it's. LRT is coming, this is just road system, so again, for that one, number eight. One, two, three, four, five, five, five. Okay, and number nine, increased housing stock, one, a one, two, three, four, four. Four. Okay, and community engagement, to build the belonging, number ten, one, one. One, two, two, thank you, and lastly. LRT and go, regional transportation options, one, two. Three. Okay?
And I had one vote left, which goes to the very top, that we covered, that had zero.
You wanna add, put it back up there?
Well, I have a vote left.
Yeah.
I didn't give it up, uh.
Right, so what?
Just so they'll have a seven and a zero, they'll have.
Uno, uno, uno.
All right, thank you, everybody, for doing that. So now we're going to move into the vision-related discussion, and how are we doing for time? We were pretty much where expected us to be, so we got about an hour and fifteen minutes, if we need all of that time, and I know you wanna get going, I know you wanna watch the game and so forth, um, so. Just thinking about the best way to do this, yeah, let's do the first part in plenary, so as I mentioned earlier, staff have developed. Um, for your consideration, they're not trying to voice these upon you, they're just saying, these are options for visions. Based on what they heard through the engagement, and Laura will put those up now in the Word document, if you would, Laura. I think I'm gonna skip that. Just for time, I have. I have another little fun exercise for you, but then we'll skip it. Okay, so these are listed as examples A, B, and C, again, staff aren't saying you need to go with these, these are just options for your consideration. What, in fact, we're gonna give you a chance to generate your own, but what I'd like to do, and sorry, I think we. Take that, that was just us fooling around, or you could take those through bullets there, so let's start with example A. So the draft vision for your consideration was Bradford will be a community of opportunity. That fosters innovation, entrepreneurial spirit, and sustainable growth. So my question, you don't have to tell me if you like it or you hate it, all I wanna know is, is there parts of that that are resonating for the right reasons? Do you have any feedback, is there anything troubling? Like, you might say, I love the feeling of prosperity that that suggests, like, it might be words that aren't even in the vision, but you're getting that feeling. It's good to identify that so staff can go away and work with some of those concepts. So we're opening up again, feel free to just yell out your thoughts, what's resonating for the right reasons, what's giving you a bit of heartburn? You know, that may be causing some issues for one reason or another, anybody wanna pitch a sauce?
I like the term, a community of opportunity, that feels simple, you know? That's a place where you go for.
That resonates for the right reasons, great, others, jump in. You like that part as well, anything troubling, anything else you'd like, don't be shy, yes.
Sustainable. That word means absolutely nothing. Oh, or it means everything, everybody, but everybody has a different opinion.
And so was that a troubling word from your perspective?
What's it mean?
What's, okay?
What does it mean?
Okay, and counselor Carpenter?
Uh, for all, I'd like to have for all in there. For everyone.
You would like to add that, gotcha, thank you, anyone else, anything resonating, networking, yes, counselor.
Fosters innovation.
You like that. Okay, anyone else?
I hate entrepreneurial spirit, well, it's really like, I don't know, it's a little too like, utili- utilitarian, like, it's like cliche, you know, like. Yeah, it's like entrepreneurial spirit, like too, um, businessy. It's supposed to be a community for everyone, we have a vision for the community, not, that just seems too corporate. For me, I don't, for this purpose.
I disappeared those last statements.
You'd like to see that in there, helping lifestyles, anyone else on this first one before we go to the other two? Okay, let's go to option B, or example B, so Bradford will collaborate with all levels of government. Local organizations, industries, and community leaders to proactively address complex challenges.
This is a budget statement, right?
This is not working for you. Put you to sleep. So this one's not resonating strongly for a variety of reasons, it's meaningless, it's not saying anything.
So I like the collaborative portion of it though. Yeah, and cuz of how it references local organizations and community leaders and everybody in it.
It does need a pause and spin at the end.
That's what's wrong with the two for me, I don't like the complex challenges part, and that we're addressing things that are wrong instead of celebrating what's good.
Gotcha, counselor Caputo?
Accountability would be missing from that. Yeah, when it says collaborate with all levels of government. That really means nothing until you put in accountability.
This is good, we're getting some good concepts and ideas out, anything else on this second one before we move to the third?
Could we address challenges that are not complex? Building a better community is almost.
It's crazy, man. Yeah, I hear what you're saying, like, when you talk about building a better community, it's like the positive side of addressing the stuff that's not going so well.
I don't like this. Proactively addressing complex challenges is so negative.
Yeah, I think I like the message of the read between the lines message of advocacy, you know, I really just don't think it.
How do you proactively address a challenge, not really work the challenge in it? You address it when it's not complex, then you're just, it's just.
So I think we're agreed, we'll go with example B. There's clearly some problems, okay, let's look at C, so again, staff just generated these to get some of your reactions. So C, Bradford will be an inclusive community that balances growth and development with equitable access. To necessary infrastructure programs and services for generations to come. What's working for you there?
Generations to come speaks to you. Having a vision for the future.
How do you define the word inclusive, there's, I mean, is it opposite of being exclusive, where we have, we're like a gated community?
It means more than just white man.
More than just white man?
Yeah.
Well, then why don't, why don't we say something that speaks to that, instead of using the word inclusive, which.
Like Bradford will be a diverse community instead of inclusive, I'll be, throw some ideas on.
I just, I just, you know, we just use these buzzwords.
So you could strike it completely, it is how that Bradford will be a community.
You're correct.
Missing something.
I know, it's the same, but one has.
One need necessarily modify every verb and now we're gonna add verb or adjective.
How about something like Bradford will represent the community's values?
Laura, were you able to get catched? I didn't catch it. Okay, some didn't hear that, or can you say it again, counselor Carpenter?
That we would be representative of of the community's values.
Representative of the community's values, thank you.
That might represent diversity.
Any other thoughts about C, anyone?
What about Bradford will be, I don't know, I lost. I was still thinking along the lines of, uh, us, that we value our citizens, or something like that. Instead of like inclusive, but like. I don't know, I'll come back to it if I think it helps. It was good.
I must have missed something, but the word inclusive, could we define how this to be used in that?
No, no, counselor McCrory said we should define it that he's, but we haven't yet defined it. Or scratch it, or scratch it, those are all answers.
That's why I thought that.
That, that's if you need to go with it. Sorry. A vibrant community. Let's capture that as a notion of vibrancy and a vibrant community, thank you.
What about Bradford being a, a community, or Bradford will be?
Why do we hate inclusive, I don't understand.
I wouldn't do this thing, but if not, can we talk about something that mentions that we're going to encourage engagements? And then the rest of it.
If we wanted, if we wanted adjective to go in front of community, why don't we try a form?
Let's make notes, we're, we're taking all ideas tonight.
Strange, I really like that.
And embraces excellence and outstanding achievement.
Excellence and outstanding achievement, and people are often like that. So I'm, if you, a- and this is impossible, like, what I'm asking you, but if you wanna chime in, that'd be great. I'm not asking you to choose between the three, cuz clearly you want to make changes to all of them. But is there one of the three that's closer to what you might be looking for than the others? And Laura, if you could just sort of scan back again and show people A and B again, I mean, it's not B, we know that, you've all, you all told us it's not B. Is it, is it A, is it, are your views closer to A, or are they closer to C, and Laura, if you could toggle back and forth?
Well, it's kinda hard to make that choice, but only what changes would be made, because there's been a bunch of suggestions for all three of them.
Right, which we haven't, yeah, words meant, you're exactly right, that's why I say it's impossible, but, yeah, go ahead, counselor.
So, for me, C is the one that I would, I'm the closest.
That was close.
It includes a lot of things that I would wanna say it's C in there, like, even if there are small changes for other folks on it.
Okay.
Um, balancing growth and development and equity of access, all of those things are in there, and for generations to come, I think that's valuable.
Okay.
So, but there's a lot of parts that I like.
Okay, I I won't push that any further, I just wanted to see if there was something jumping out, um, okay, Laura, if you could go back to the slides. Cuz I just wanna set up our final exercise, well, close to final exercise that you'll be doing in breakout, and we'll go into recess again to allow that to happen. But let me set it up for you, I will give Laura a second to toggle over. So I just wanted to talk, and and I could spend hours on this, I've just got one slide, if we could go to the next one, I think it is, Laura? Okay, so you're going to now break into groups, or into three groups. And I'm gonna invite you to come up with your draft vision statements, which could use words from what we talked about earlier, or something completely different. So we're looking to create a single draft vision statement within each of your three groups, so we'll leave here with no more than three of them. But to do that, I do want you to think about these points underneath, and let me explain them. From my point of view, you want to avoid what I call the worn out and the banal. I can't tell you how many municipalities have the following as their vision statement. And as soon as I started, you'll fill it in, to be a great place to live, work, and play. Right, everybody, and it's a safe thing, right, like, who's gonna argue with that, yeah, I wanna be a great place to live, work, and play. But it's not overly inspiring anymore because it's not differentiating. So I'm gonna encourage you to be inspirational and aspirational, like, when Disneyland says, we wanna be the happiest place on earth. That's putting a stake in the ground, like, of all the places you could be in the entire world, they wanna be the happiest place on earth. When Princess Margaret Foundation says, we wanna conquer cancer in our lifetime. That's powerful and compelling and inspirational, so I'll encourage you, you may not wanna go that far. But do try to be somewhat inspiring and aspirational, that's number one. Secondly, it's gotta be a bit futuristic, it's not a vision if you're already doing it. Like, if it's already accomplished, it's not a vision, so it's gotta have some desirability for tomorrow. And by tomorrow, I don't mean tomorrow, I mean up to twenty fifty, which is. What do I mean by realistic or jackball achievable, I don't know if you've ever played jacks. But the idea is to like get the thing as close to the jack as po- to the ball as possible, but you can never land on top. And so when, for example, I'll give you another ex- uh, one, uh, responsible gambling council. Says they want to have a world free of problem gambling, that's what we call a jackball achievable vision. Is it likely that there will nev- that there will ever be an entire world with not a single person with a gambling problem? Likely not ever going to happen, but you strive for a world free of problem gambling. So think about that as well, it's gotta be saleable, gotta be palatable. Guys, all of you will be thinking, what's saleable to constituents, what's saleable to staff, you'll be giving all of those considerations. I again, hope it will be differentiating, somewhat memorable, understandable, and short and simple is key. Like, a vision statement that is three sentences long, nobody will ever remember it. Like, they will not know what it is, so if you couldn't nail it in, you know, twenty words or less in a single sentence, in in ten words. Like, when Disney says, we wanna be the happiest place on earth, that's five or six words. You know, conquer cancer in our lifetime, how many words is that, conquer cancer in our lifetime, five, but powerful. So I'll encourage you to do all of that, and then be prepared not only to share them, but to provide your supporting rationale. Why did you come up with what you came up with? So we'll divide ourselves into groups of two. No, three, three. Oh, we've got, yeah, yeah, no, no, we've got four, seven, we've got eight, so it'll be three, three, and two. Um, and I will invite you, I I I don't wanna number off or do anything like that, but just before we do that, we'll ask our. Uh, uh, chair to bring us into recess, but how do you want, do you wanna just kinda cluster together, like, we could say?
Let's do Richard there, us three, and then these two.
Was, was that clear to everybody?
Yeah, Richard goes there, then us three.
And those two, okay, we're all good with that? Okay, so chair, if you wouldn't mind bringing us into recess. Now, I've brought, I've brought large size flip charts, if you'd like to use them, or you can just write them on a sheet of paper, whatever you prefer. So again, for those of you may be joining us remotely, we just took an opportunity to have three small breakout group sessions. Wherein each group was developing a draft vision statement, we're now gonna share each of those three, Laura will kindly input them. She's already inputted some of them already, and we'll look to get your reactions to each of the three. We'll see if there's one that might be resonating more strongly than another, that may or may not be the case. And then we'll quickly talk about next steps and draw things to a close. So I think we're in very good shape time wise, we shouldn't be too, too much longer. So why don't I just start with this one, cuz it's here, um, can I ask the good folks from this group to read it out for us? And to give us a little bit of the rationale, and to explain this lovely graphic?
Uh, Bradford will be a vibrant community of opportunity that fosters a prosperous and healthy lifestyle.
Great, and you can see Laura's already inputted that up here, any rationale you wanna provide for why you came up with what you came up?
I think we wanted to keep a positive spin on it, uh, we like the community of opportunity, cuz that speaks to hope. Um, we like prosperity, that speaks to our, um, economic standing. Um, and the healthy lifestyle really speaks to, um, the amenities that we have here with our trail system. And some of the things that are coming down the pipeline with sports centers and facilities and things like that, so.
Great, so let me ask the other two groups for your reactions, any feedback, I'll, I'll put this down now so that you can see the screen. Thank you very much to that group. Any reactions to that one, positive, negative?
Very nice, very easy, easy to remember.
Yeah, simple, direct, easy to remember, tell others?
Inspiring.
Inspiring, great. Anyone else? Positive or negative?
I think it's missing something, it's curious, like how you were talking about how the component of the future hatched into it.
So it doesn't feel like it has that strong future perspective, okay? Anyone else, any reactions, good, bad, indifferent, we're open to all comments?
Indifferent.
And I think vibrant. No, it's been used a lot.
Oh, it's been used a lot, sorry.
Yeah, I think that vibrant's been used a lot.
So we're just hearing Laura that vibrant maybe is an overused word. Any other reaction to this one?
I think the word vibrant, it's imperative, because it speaks to everything. It's not just, it doesn't exclude any area of. Uh, of, of the whole score. It's, it, it doesn't speak to that, doesn't speak to an economy, it's not speaking to a lifestyle, it's not speaking to, uh, housing. Uh, it's not speaking to a vault, it just talks about a community that's vibrant, which means.
So it has a comprehensiveness, a kind of universality to it, okay, gotcha, I hear you, anyone else on this one? Okay, let's look at, uh, well, we'll go up to, again, in no particular order, we'll go up to A. And I'll ask the group who worked on this one to read it out themselves and give us the rationale.
Sure. Bradford will be a viable and comparable community that fosters an innovative, strong economy. To allow us to provide the services that businesses and residents want and need.
Any rationale from either of you in support of that one?
Economy, lifestyle, important, important.
Counselor Caputo?
Exactly, that was what we, we, we wanted, basically like we, we keep it simple, but at the same time, putting everything in there. That needs to have in all areas looked at, that needs, wants, desires, and be vibrant.
And further to support counselor Caputo's endorsement of the word vibrant. The dictionary, vibrant, the dictionary meaning of vibrant.
The dictionary, vibrant, the dictionary meaning of vibrant is full of energy and enthusiasm. What better word could there be to describe Bradford?
Can I go back to this? Feels very harsh and utilitarian.
Um, okay, any other reactions to this one?
It falls under again, easy to understand and remember.
Okay, so easy to understand and remember.
Remember that stature.
And it's sort of there, were you serious of when you, and then source?
Well, there is something utilitarian, it feels utilitarian, same aspiration, like a spoon. Here we go with this utilitarian.
The word utilitarian, well, I think, I like the word vibrant, I like the word caring, but it kind of starts off a little bit soft and then goes harsh. Right, but I, I think it's really important, the part about the strong and innovative economy. I just think maybe we need to lean a bit on the vibrant and caring.
Okay, anyone else?
The thing that I liked about that one was about what the residents wanted and needed, that was the part that stood out for me in that.
So this last part?
Yeah, I like that part, like I also liked that it said caring and stuff, but that's already been said, so that would be the part that stood out.
But you can almost strike out the word businesses, the services that businesses want and need because you kind of touched already on the economic part of it. And lean sort of, I don't know.
And staff will take all of this away and your valued feedback, and they'll, they'll do a little massaging and bring some other stuff back to you. Anyone else, any comments on this one?
Yeah, when it, when it says, uh, a vibrant and caring community, I'd like to have us to instill confidence. I, I, I want to see something that says that we're going to work to have our community proud of, of being a Brentfordian. And I don't know how that it words, but I like to see confidence as part of the thing that we have to build in our community, not, when we say that they need and want, it suggests that we will know that. As opposed to them.
Some of us, or at least I didn't under, did you say confidence or competence?
Confidence, yes, confidence.
Thank you, and the feeling of pride, I think you said as well, okay. Anyone else, anything on this one before we go to the third one? Okay, so over to, are you able to get it on screen, Laura? Yes, so we'll look at C and I'll invite this group to share it for us.
Uh, Bradford will be a community that values our heritage, sense of belonging and civic pride that balances growth and development with access to necessary infrastructure programs, ser- and services for generations to come. So we included the pieces from that final one that you guys had, because I really liked that part. Um, and then, uh, it was very important to us to have the pride in there and.
And it reflects on the past, present, and the future.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I see like Counselor Carpenter was saying you do have civic pride as you were just mentioning, okay. Um, anything else in terms of rationale before I open it up to any comments from your colleagues? I just said that represents past, present, and future.
Yeah.
Gotcha, Counselor Carpenter, anything?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you, so let me open it up, reactions, positive, negative, in between? Chair McCurry?
I know what I'm ambeveling, I'm not ambeveling about this. Uh, I quite like it, but I think there should be some economic reference in there, I guess.
That's fair.
So it's, it's, it's got some powerful resonance, but you'd like to see some.
It was slow, waiting the extra time.
Yeah, I think it does speak the opening, I think we do truly, we've got a great hair and cheer, but I think we do value it and that sense of. I like the opening, this was just a word, words with access to necessary infrastructure.
Yeah, I know. If there was another way to say similar things, I would be better with that, but I do think that it's, um, important to include that in some way.
So it's got others feeling similar, it's got that strong opening, it's losing a little bit in this, how you're feeling with some more, yes?
I think where I wanted to kind of go with ours, we had discussion on was in the perfect world, the people that live in Bradford would leave Bradford and be advocates for Bradford, they'd be so proud to be from Bradford that they would share that wherever they went, and they would be encouraging people to come back. And I think that this speaks to that feeling, um, through the civic pride. I just think we lose it a little bit at the end, but it's nothing that can't be wordsmithed of it.
Just to add to what you're saying, I think there's value in some of the other examples that we've already read, being incorporated into what we have there. Whether it's to add the healthy lifestyle portion to get that in there, or how it talks about residents, um, what this, what they need and want or whatever, those pieces.
How to be incorporate the opening statement and put it into the first one, but that's not very.
Well, I was about to say, I'm sensing, and don't let me put words in anybody's mouth, but I think there is an opportunity, a real opportunity here to do a bit of a combo, where you're stealing a few key phrases from each one to have a really strong final. We've all tried to do that today, because that's painful to try to wordsmith it, uh, you know, with a group. But we'll leave that in the hands of, uh, staff, and they will come back to you with a, an option or options. But are there any further comments? So for leading contender, maybe we should just say that we're looking for a combo of the three and try to grab the best of each. Is that fair, or does anybody want to add anything?
All right, I'll explain the second one out together.
No, no, I think we need to draw from that, like. We have to draw from not the, the economic portion of this, right, like? I think we're prioritizing option C, and we want to draw from option A, the parts about.
Your economic.
Vibrancy and, um, the healthy lifestyle and things like that, that energy from option A. Option B, we want to draw from their, um, the economic growth and a strong economy.
So is that ringing true for others, that there, if you, you kind of started with C as a base and drew some of those other elements from the other two?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay.
So we've gone from the.
So. Yeah, yeah, maybe we add vibrant, but like, uh, Countess Scolia says, maybe we add the words vibrant economy in that phrase somewhere. I like the word vibrant, because it doesn't, strong doesn't say the word vibrant, says, you know, it's, 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 it's active.
And Laura's highlighting a few of those key phrases, so that you can, that's great. Okay, I won't push this any further, um, other than to, and I know this group, I think jokingly said, hey, we came up with the best one. You all, you all came up with really good stuff, okay, it was that, yeah. That's right, you, you are the foundation on which the vision is built.
I just wanted to add the word, talking about taking pieces from that one. I would hate to have the top, the end portion where it talked about future generations lost. So I just want to highlight that as being an important part, but that was in ours, but I guess they're making adjustments.
For the.
It was one that, it's a piece that came from the original example, and I think that that's very important, Nikki.
Yeah, and it seems to have resonated that phrase, you know, with a number of people. Okay, so everybody, in our last few minutes, uh, Laura, thank you again, uh, maybe we should quickly show our appreciation to Laura, thank you. And Laura, you will flip to the slides, because we'll just talk about next steps and this will just take a minute. Um, and then I'll see if there are any other comments, observations you want to share, and then I'll do a quick thing, I call one word with you, but I'll come back to that. And then we'll wrap things up, I'll hand things to Chair McCurry to do so. So the next steps are really short, um, we're looking at finalizing the community survey, it's in the live, it's in the field for a few more weeks. Um, the team will of course analyze the results once they're all in, you saw a snapshot, I think of it in the engagement summary that was prepared. And then I was talking to Michael on the break, and he was saying, it may not come to you in March, it might be April. So just, it, you know, because he doesn't want to rush things, so we're, we don't, we're not promising that March nineteenth date. It could be the April meeting, but it will be sometime in the next month or two. Uh, my involvement probably sort of ends or pretty much ends tonight, but I know Laura and Aaron and the team will continue to work with all of this and bring you back something that hopefully will, you know, really resonate strongly and fully. So thank you again for doing all the good work that you did today. So I wanted to do one quick exercise with you before we drop the, or before I do that. Did anyone have any final thoughts they wanted to share? Any other observations, questions, comments? Yes?
Are you doing our survey?
No, I'm not, I'm not involved in the survey.
That concludes my questions.
Okay, but if you had a question about the survey, we could ask that.
Uh, right now?
If you'd like.
I just had a question about the surveys and if we sort of lay out targets for us that we want to speak to a certain amount of people in a certain age group, um, as opposed to just opening it up to anybody on Facebook. So that we can make sure we have data that comes back from not just the fifty-five plus age group, which I know is heavily dominant in our survey results.
So do you have a stratified sample that reflects gender, demographics, ages, and so forth?
So we do from the focus groups, there were also both focus groups done as part of the Bradford twenty fifteen initiative. And those were done, um, specifically around some lines, so there were specific focus groups for you, there were specific focus groups for newcomers to the community. So those specifically will have, uh, different demographic breakdowns for, uh, for the survey itself, we distributed through multiple means. Uh, you know, last month on South Bradford, through multiple social media channels, who fires out a good community and just encouraging folks to share, uh, the link wherever possible, so we're just trying to get survey note to as many viewers as possible, not saying.
And when the results come back to this, are they weighted in some way, shape, or form, or is it just? It is what it is?
Uh, so it's by the six categories that we looked at for, um, the parent share activity. So the responses will be based on all of those different, uh, categories, so they're not weighted based on who responded. Uh, we have some social code data, so. More that, that's coming term, but we don't know demographic information.
Okay, thank you. Any other quick comments, observations, before I ask you to do one more quick thing before we wrap up?
One, one question I have, Laura, which you can provide some, and I'll share later. Uh, I wonder if you could tell us exactly how the individual participants were selected for the focus group.
So the focus groups, they were, um, invitations were sent out to a lot of different community groups, saying we're looking to put together some focus groups. There were some flyers, uh, there were some social media posts, and people were able to sign up.
So there's a list of, laundry list of groups in the document, is that, some of those folks that were invited?
Absolutely, some folks were invited for interviews and some folks were.
Okay, thank you. One, one thing I'd like to say before we, we move into the next segment, Glenn. I think, I speak for everybody when we say this, it's been very valuable for us. It's been a, kind of a nice team building exercise, and, and thank you for the work you've put into this.
You're very welcome, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Great, so my last exercise called one word, and I'm serious, just one word, I'm going to go around the horn. I'd like each of you counselors to just tell me the one word that from your point of view captures how you're feeling about what we've accomplished and where we're going, you know, are you excited, are you annoyed, are you disappointed, I, whatever, positive, negative? One word that captures how you're feeling about what we've done so far and where we're headed. I'll just kind of start with Counselor Martin, do you want to? Positive, great, Mayor? And you both had the same?
No, I'm going to go to. A cautiously optimist, all right, hyphenated, hyphenated word, that's great.
Okay, so with that, we will, um, hand things back to Chair McCurry to draw things to a close.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Enthusiastic, thank you.
Yeah, I couldn't hear Counselor Carpenter, say it again?
Enthusiastic.
Thank you, thank you for doing that, my apologies, I skipped by you.
Okay, members of committee, we now have some business to conduct. Uh, we do have a recommendation for us, three point zero A and B. Uh, let me get a mover and sec, here, for anything that's before us, moved by Counselor Samuel, segmented by Counselor Van Tilmer. Um, A and B, questions, comments? Seeing that, we shall go to the show of hands, those in favor. That appears to be unanimous, thank you very much. We've got no other business today, no notices, no resolutions, we're adjourned again, thank you, Mike, for your, your.
Thank you for inviting me, it's a pleasure.
Thank you, glad.